This is Right to Life Radio with John Gerardi on Power Talk 96.7 and AM 1400. A production of Right to Life of Central California. And now here's your host, John Gerardi.
The city council resolution to honor abortion is dead. Welcome to Right to Life Radio. Good to have you all with us. Good to have Jonathan Keller back in the studio again. It's been a couple of weeks since you've been in. So good to have Jonathan with us.
I'm happy to be here, especially on such a momentous week. Getting to be at that press conference was encouraging.
Yeah, well, and Jonathan was at the National March for Life and then he was doing other stuff. So anyway, so it's been a couple of weeks. So it's good to have Jonathan Keller back in the studio with us, CEO of California Family Council. All right, Jonathan, so I want to talk a little bit about this council resolution. For the second segment of the show, we'll play the speech that I gave at the press conference outside of City Hall. Audio and video courtesy of Jonathan Keller, so thanks for that, Jonathan. And I want, though, today to talk about this council resolution in the context of a couple of broader themes. So a couple of different broader themes, which is first, this idea, which Jonathan, I think we encounter a lot in the pro-life world, and it's, this is a gentle correction. I'm not saying it's wrong. I am saying it's wrong. I'm gently, I'm not saying it's horrifically wrong and terrible. I want to issue, though, a gentle correction to the attitudes that some pro-lifers have that it's kind of a, I don't know, it's almost sort of a lazy conventional wisdom that people have. And I feel like your attitudes on this are evolving as the more you talk with me about it.
As on many things.
Well, it's the concept of law is downstream of culture.
Yes.
Okay? And the idea is that law has just changed to reflect the society they're in.
And you see this, John, I will say, not just in the pro-life sphere, but you hear this a lot from evangelical pastors and some Catholic pastors or priests as well. Oh, well, politics is downstream from culture. You know, we gotta change hearts.
We gotta change the hearts.
Change minds.
Change minds. And a lot, sometimes on the pro-life side, you'll hear people say, "We don't need to make abortion illegal, we need to make abortion unthinkable." And that's sort of another species of this way of thinking.
Right.
And today, I want to gently push back against it by saying I think it's completely reverse and opposite and not necessar-- okay, okay, I'm exaggerating a little bit. But I think people say that too much.
Yes.
And they underestimate the value and importance of actually making a really evil thing illegal. Okay? You all often mention the Martin Luther King Jr. quote about, you know, "The law can't make my fellow man love me, but it can make him..."
Prevent me from lynching me.
Prevent him from lynching me. And that's something. And there's a lot of wisdom in that quote. Law has an important impact on altering behavior. And law's impact on altering behavior itself has a big impact on what people think and believe. Okay? Before the 13th Amendment was ratified, large swathes of the country thought slavery was okay. Within a mere 50 or 60 years of the 13th Amendment being ratified, most people didn't think slavery was okay anymore. The overwhelming majority of people still did not think slavery was okay anymore. And why? Well, we passed a law, we passed a constitutional amendment outlawing slavery, and that, the impact of law, the impact law has on education, the impact law has on educating morals.
The pedagogical effect.
The pedagogical, pedagogical effect is really, really profound. And people underestimate its role and importance. So, and that's the annoying thing among some people in the pro-life movement, and usually it's not people in the movement. It's usually like liberal-leaning people who don't really like pro-lifers, they don't like abortion, and they try to separate themselves. And they'll say things like, "Well, I don't know that you actually have to make abortion illegal. Is it really necessary to make abortion illegal? What we really should do is alter incentives and more, you know, social welfare spending programs to support mothers so that people won't need to make the choice for abortion." And...
Wouldn't it be better to focus our efforts on positive things, to create a culture of life instead of all this negativity?
Yeah, which, on the one hand, is a species of the walk and chew bubble gum argument that you can't walk and chew bubble gum at the same time, that like, "Oh, you know, what we actually could do is we could do both. It's like, we could try to make abortion illegal, and we could also try to, you know, support policies to help support mothers or, you know, provide better men," whatever. Like, so they engage in, I'm sure there's an actual technical name for this as a logical fallacy, but that's my colloquial name for it, is the walk and chew bubble gum fallacy, that basically, "No, no, no, we can't, we can't, we should focus our efforts better," as if effort is just this completely zero-sum game, a totally limited resource, that if you take one piece of my effort pizza towards outlawing abortion, I can never get that piece of pizza back to, you know. It's like, no, there's, you know, state legislatures offer, they write lots and lots of bills. We can write one bill for this and another bill for that. Like, really, it's really possible. So I guess what I want to argue is not necessarily that culture is 100% downstream of law, but that they interact with one another. Cultural things help change laws and laws change culture, and they go at least back and forth.
John, the analogy that I've liked to use on this, and I might have even mentioned it on the show before, is that you hear all this talk about stream, and you hear, like, when you think...
Which is like, it's, basically, the problem is that we have this downstream-upstream metaphor.
Yes.
And people are just abusing it to death and using it as their way of thinking about everything, and it's like, "This is just the wrong metaphor. We need to get out of the stream."
And so the idea behind it is, if it's true, like, if you are...
I've got a stream for you.
Sorry, that's crude. If you are here, we're not used to it as much here in Central California, because unless you get way up into the foothills or the mountains, we don't really have streams or creeks.
Yeah, or water.
Or water.
Of any kind.
But theoretically, let's say you were up at Yosemite, like, the two months of the year that there's any water up there.
That there's a waterfall, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If, it's true, if you go up the stream before the waterfall and you dump a bunch of crap into the water, downstream, that is going to come out.
Right.
And on the flip side, if you clean up a bunch of stuff upstream, then downstream, it's going to be a little bit cleaner.
Right.
But I think the better analogy, John, for us is, it's less of a stream than it is a pool.
Right.
And if you go over here...
We're all swimming in it. It's a lake.
If you have a child who comes over here and...
Pees in the pool.
Yes, you and I are both, you and I are both parents. Raphael, producer Raphael is a parent. If one of our children pees in the pool or does another bodily function in the pool...
Yeah, leaves a baby, Ruth, in the pool.
Yes, sooner or later, the rest of the pool is going to notice that this is going on.
Right.
And everybody is going to be like, "Wow, this is not great. How do I take care of this?" And now, it doesn't matter if you are in the shallow end of the pool or the deep end of the pool.
The pool has pee.
Yes, and everything that happens in the pool will eventually affect everything else in the pool.
Right.
And that's the negative side. But on the positive side, if you dish something out of the pool...
Yeah, it helps improve things for all the rest of the pool. Put chlorine in the pool, there you go.
You alter, you know, you come out and you do a study and you say, "You know what? Adding these chemicals will alter the pH balance and it'll make sure that there's no algae growing." And everything that you do to one part of the pool is eventually going to affect the entire pool. And I think that's the way that I like, I prefer to think about law and culture and politics. Like, it doesn't exist in a vacuum.
No, it does not.
So culture, yes, work to change culture, but you know a way you can change culture, John?
Is by changing the law.
Bottoming.
And that's even a thing, here's the cop-out aspect of, "We don't need to change the law, we need to change the culture." It sort of just takes as a baseline assumption, these kind of democratic ideas, that, "Well, we need, we can't really change the law until we get a certain critical mass of the population believing in these cultural positions. We can't really change the law until we develop a democratic majority of people who think that X, Y, and Z." And one of the things you consistently see throughout the cultural history, I guess, of the 20th century is extremely committed minority groups...
Yep.
Working really hard and really strategically to have a profound, broader impact on the culture that nobody, that, for advancing cultural beliefs that most people did not agree with. Okay? Like transgenderism has all of a sudden become a dominant, like, being pro-transgender is now a dominant force in academia, in media, in, it's captured, like, even the language that media outlets use, preferred pronouns, business communities, all this stuff. When you poll the average American, most Americans disagree pretty profoundly with fundamental tenets of transgender ideology. Hundreds of millions of Americans don't 100% agree with transgender ideology, and yet by utilizing very committed and specifically committed minorities of people working in certain critical juncture points in American academia, media, et cetera, they've been able to completely change the entire conversation. Gay marriage became legalized when most Americans did not want it to be legalized.
Well, and John...
Abortion was legalized when most Americans did not want abortion to be legalized.
The gay marriage angle is fascinating, because if you go back and you look, you had, in 2004, you had serious discussion, including even from Hillary Clinton, who was having to kind of walk on eggshells during her time in the Senate about whether or not the US Senate was going to pass a federal constitutional amendment defining marriage as between a man and a woman.
Yeah.
And in the early 2000s, like, well, in the year 2000, you had Prop 22...
That is in future, the year 2000.
That's right. Anyway. Prop 22 in California passed with like 61% of the vote, saying, "Hey, marriage is between a man and a woman." And then, a short eight years later, Prop 8 passed. Oh, marriage is between a man and a woman. When, by the time that marriage, gay marriage reached the Supreme Court in 2013, 34 states had passed constitutional amendments defining marriages between a man and a woman.
Right.
John, that's only four states away from it being what you need to ratify in actual...
To ratify a constitutional amendment, yeah.
It was essentially a two-thirds, actually, a three-quarters majority, almost, which is what you need, of states that said, "Yes, we're going to, we're going to pass this." It was a two-thirds, because, yeah, 34, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But my point being that, based on the popular vote in all those states, there was no question which way the American public was trending.
Exactly.
But Anthony Kennedy, in his wisdom, knew better.
Right, and very intelligent, committed minorities of people worked really hard...
Yep.
And advanced a certain agenda. And it recalls, it calls to my mind, how many people probably told, you know, these, those legislators in Texas who were floating this idea for a, "How about a law that bans abortion through private lawsuits, you know, instead of police action?" How many people probably told them, "No, no, no, you can't do that. No, we can't ban abortion like that. We need to change, we need a broader change of the culture and..."
John, we need a framework for a future potential court to maybe reexamine Roe versus...
Yeah, that, this is an inside joke, making fun of National Right to Life and their idiotic amicus brief in the Dobbs case, where they didn't actually call for the Supreme Court to overturn Roe v. Wade, even though they're National Right to Life, an organization with whom we are not affiliated. Anyway, when we return, we're going to bring my speech, the speech I gave at Fresno City Hall this past Tuesday regarding the Fresno City Council Resolution to Honor Abortion Rights. We will provide you with that full speech next on Right to Life Radio, right here on All right, we are going to run now a speech that I delivered in front of the Fresno City Hall this past Tuesday. This was a speech regarding a Fresno City Council Resolution. This was a resolution proposed by Miguel Arias and Esmeralda Soria to basically honor legal abortion in the city of Fresno. Here is that speech in full and my explanation of it.
Mayor Dyer, Councilman Bretafeld, distinguished guests, thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. As a lawyer and as the Director of Right to Life of Central California, I just want to kind of give all of you a sense of the magnitude of what this would do. I think one reaction we have is that this is for show. This is a silly resolution that doesn't do anything. As Mayor says, it doesn't build a road, it doesn't do anything. But it does establish something. First of all, it symbolically states that we, the city of Fresno, support legalized abortion. And that's something, and that is something big. This city council makes statements in support of good things. We honor victims of the Armenian genocide. We honor all kinds of things that maybe the city council can't do something about, but we stand for what's right and we oppose what is wrong. And for the city, it's simply, "Oh, it's just symbolic. Why are you pro-lifers upset?" No, symbols mean things. And the civic stances that a city takes, those have a big impact on public morals and public beliefs. So we should vigorously oppose this, even if it's just a resolution, even if it's not doing something. It's something that we should oppose firmly and vigorously. Beyond that, this resolution would establish a legislative precedent for this city and for this city council. If this were to pass, and thank God we have Mayor Dyer, who would be willing to veto this and prevent that from happening, but if this were to pass, going forward, this city could then point to this as a legislative precedent. If, for example, what if Planned Parenthood wants to bend some zoning rules to establish a new abortion facility? What if the city wants to, what if Planned Parenthood comes forward wanting a contract with the city? What if some other way in which the city, maybe in its local governmental capacities, might want to partner with abortion providers? The members of this council could point to this resolution and say, "This is established as a precedent of this council. We support abortion rights. We should cooperate with these things." So it doesn't do nothing. It would establish a very bad legislative precedent. And again, this is a reason to firmly and vigorously oppose this. The language of this resolution was also very carefully crafted. I doubt that Esmeralda Soria or Miguel Arias, you know, rolled out of bed one morning and just, you know, typed this up on their laptop. This language is incredibly specific. It perfectly ties in with the legislative language used by pro-choice advocates throughout this state, calling for the recognition of the right to access abortion. Gary Bretafeld just mentioned in his little talk at the start of this about how, you know, we've gone from safe, legal, and rare. The pro-choice side doesn't use that phrase anymore. They say that abortion must be safe, legal, and universally accessible. Any barrier to abortion access must be knocked down. If you can't pay for it, the state should pay for it.
No!
If you can't get to an abortion clinic physically, then abortion pills should be shipped through the mail to you. That was a change at the FDA that President Biden just authorized. This perfectly ties in with Governor, the language of this resolution also perfectly ties in with Governor Newsom's desire to make California an abortion sanctuary state. Basically, what Governor Newsom wants is, first of all, he is afraid that Roe v. Wade will be overturned, and I am delighted for Roe v. Wade will be overturned, but believe we will see it this year. If Roe v. Wade is overturned, what Governor Newsom wants to do, his Future of Abortion Council in California has promoted these legislative proposals, basically to make California a magnet for abortion tourism, for people to fly to California just to have abortion, to get Medi-Cal coverage for out-of-state persons to have abortions in California, to pay for their travel, to pay for their lodging. These are all proposals that are going to come before the California Legislature this year, and this resolution perfectly dovetails with all of it. We should reject it completely out of hand. I'll end my remarks just by mentioning, Gary mentioned in his talk about the resources available to women in the city of Fresno for dealing with challenging circumstances of pregnancy. And I don't want anyone to take from this press conference that the people of Fresno are insensitive to the severe difficulties that people face. We have severe deficiencies in provision of prenatal care in this city, particularly in rural parts of the valley, outside the city, in many parts of South Fresno. There aren't a lot of options for people either with Medi-Cal or without insurance to get prenatal care. We at Right to Life of Central California established a subsidiary corporation called the Obria Medical Clinics of Central California. This is a brand-new prenatal healthcare clinic located in Fresno and Barstow. And the goal of this clinic is to bridge that gap, to provide the full range of prenatal care services, from your initial ultrasounds all the way through delivery and postpartum care. This is what this community believes in. This community believes in love, answering the difficulties that people face, whether it's with poverty, lack of access to healthcare, responding to it with love, and reaching out to women to offer them the resources they need. Women in this valley need prenatal care, they do not need abortion. They need love and support. They do not need abortion. And that's not just me talking, that is my army of women volunteers, supporters, employees. My entirely female staff is at the Obria Medical Clinics right now, actually seeing patients and actually doing this work. So with all that said, thank you all for coming. Thank you to Mayor Dyer for your support of us. Thank you, Gary, for organizing all of this, and thanks to all of you.
Fantastic work, John. What you do is amazing at the Right to Life organization, and there are plenty of organizations and clinics out there to help folks who are struggling with their pregnancy and any issues related to that.
Well, to toot my own horn, I thought it was an okay speech. All right, we are going to head to commercial right now. When we come back, whoa, when we come back, we are going to discuss the Texas abortion law and the actual impact it has had, law having an impact on culture, next on Right So Jonathan, we had, we've been discussing this politics is downstream of culture thing.
Yes, yes.
One of the things that we are often presented with by sort of more soft-left, kind of pro-life people, but who are very left-wing and who are uneasy about banning abortion, is that some people will say, "Well, even if you ban abortion, that doesn't mean abortions aren't going to happen. Even if you ban abortion, that doesn't mean abortions aren't going to happen." That, basically, the implication being that the legal status of abortion has actually no impact whatsoever on whether or not abortions are taking place.
John, look, just because you ban spousal abuse doesn't mean it's going to not happen.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean...
Yeah, which, yes, yes, which presents, on the one hand, whether or not you should still criminally ban something even if it's not going to reduce the incidence of it, because there's something about society saying spousal abuse is fine. Well, if we ban it, it'll still hap-- yeah, but you should probably still say it's wrong somehow or other.
You know, I mean, that's just my...
Just a thought.
It's a very Victorian opinion, John. You're, you know, you're, gosh, I don't understand why you can't be more libertarian in your views and morals.
Yeah, exactly.
Why does society have to criminalize things?
Yeah, yeah, man, decriminalize it, man.
Don't force your morality on me.
Yeah, keep your rosaries off my over, et cetera. Okay.
Just, I should stipulate for any listeners, John and I both love our wives and...
Yeah.
We are 100% against spousal abuse, for the record.
The point of this segment, anyway. All right. Relating to all of that, as, again, many pro-choice people sort of, for lack of, this is not the most, you know, winsome way of approaching it, but I will say, the weenie pro-lifers of the world say, "Oh, no, outlawing, it's not going to make it happen less." Let's go to Texas. Texas, which passed its bill to outlaw abortion via a creative process of allowing, basically, anybody to sue an abortion doctor or anyone who aids and abets in an abortion, not to sue the mom, but sue the abortion provider. And what do we see? Abortions in Texas fell 60% in the first month under new limits. This is New York, this is an AP story from February 10th. Abortions in Texas fell by 60% in the first month under the most restrictive abortion law in the US in decades, according to new figures that for the first time reveal a full accounting of the immediate impact. The nearly 2,200 abortions reported by Texas providers in September came after a new law took effect that bans the procedure once cardiac activity is detected, usually around six weeks of pregnancy, and without exceptions in cases of rape or incest. The figures were released this month by the Texas Health and Human Services Commission. Again, this is the point of what we're saying. Like, there have been all these different groups of people trying to tell, you know, Jonathan and me, you know, the, I guess, the non-weenie pro-lifers of the world, now that I'm, now that I'm going to just embrace this terminology of weenie pro-lifers, basically have been saying, "Well, just because you outlaw abortion doesn't mean that fewer abortions will happen." Some of these people also, this sort of similar mindset was behind people who promoted what, oh, I forget his name, I think Dr. Nate, Bernard Nathanson. So there were certain statistics that got floated to say that before Roe v. Wade, there were hundreds of thousands of illegal abortions happening all over the United States all the time, and that actually Roe v. Wade coming about did nothing to actually really alter the abortion rate in the United States. Bernard Nathanson later would go on to say that that was BS, that that was, those were cooked-up statistics that were really not based in anything. And people have tried to make this charge, "No, outlawing abortion's not going to change anything. You need to change hearts and minds instead. We need to make abortion unthinkable, not make it illegal. You know, outlawing, all you'll be doing is putting women at risk so that they'll be prosecuted if they have a miscarriage or something like that." And I think this, what's happening in Texas with very good information right before our eyes, is kind of proof positive that all that stuff is BS, that actually prohibitions on abortion do lessen the incidence of abortion, that it is effective. And, I mean, presumably, our pro-choice interlocutors will just move on from that to some other different stupid argument.
Well, John, let me...
But it is kind of vindicating, I think.
We were talking about this on the break, so let me, let me bring in yet another controversial medical procedure.
Sure.
Vaccinations.
Right!
The hilarious thing to me is that many of these same people, not only pro-lifers, but you especially see this among the fiscally conservative...
Fiscally conservative, socially liberal crowd.
Look, you know, I don't understand why we need to be mandating this, blah, blah, blah. But so many people, but especially among people that are more liberal, will say, on the one hand, they will begin by saying, "Oh, you know, we shouldn't outlaw abortion. We don't need to worry about it, because how is that going to affect the prevalence or the incidence of everything?" Many of these same liberals are the people that are jumping to demand vaccine passports.
Well, that's true, yeah.
Why, look, look, why do we need a vaccine passport? It's not like it's going to make anybody get vaccinated, anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
When people just flaunt it and...
Yeah, people don't respond to threats of legal punishment or restrictions on their freedom. No, there's, yeah, the entirety of the COVID regime of, you know, whether it's vaccine mandates, vaccine passports, mandates in order to go into restaurants, mask mandates, the entirety of it is some form of restriction on your freedom that we are doing to bring about behavioral change.
Yep.
And the notion that, "Whoa, well, people just, you know, people will just be getting abortions, anyway. A criminal prohibition will do absolutely nothing." Criminal prohibition, the threat of going to jail...
Yep.
Will do absolutely nothing to alter someone's behavior or to alter a doctor's behavior before he decides to, "Hey, maybe I'm going to do an abortion today." Like, really? Like, what we see in Texas is not even, you don't even need the threat of going to jail to stop a doctor from doing it. You just need the threat that this doctor's going to have to pay $10,000 back.
Yeah.
Like, that's all it is in Texas.
It's a lawsuit threat.
Yeah, it's a threat of a lawsuit, where the doctor would have to pay $10,000. And that has been enough to cut abortions in Texas by 60%. So, again, this idea that, you know, law is upstream of culture, law is downstream of culture, because I'm a midwif who can only think in terms of simple metaphors, like a river. So law is downstream of culture. You have to change the culture, you have to change hearts and minds, you have to make the conditions in society so that people can freely choose.
We started with a Cheech and Chong impression, and now we're at a Walter Cronkite impression.
Yeah, well, I don't know why Walter Cronkite got involved in this. It should be like, the really annoying thing of this was, in college, I knew some people who were pro-life, who they just fell in love with Barack Obama. It was like, you know, 2008, you know, Barack Obama was this young charismatic politician. I was like, "He's not young, he's like 45. Why are you, as a 20-year-old, like, so, like, you know, hypnotized by this man?"
Thanks, Douglas Coman.
And, and all these people were saying, "Well, we don't," because they were just wanted to be cool and wanted to be, you know, Obama supporters and wanted to be hip and not vote for, you know, you know, old fart like John McCain. You know, what's cool about John McCain, all he was, was a, you know, naval fighter pilot who was an American freaking war hero. Uh, no, 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 we have to be cool, we have to support Barack Obama. Anyway, and so basically, it turned these otherwise pro-life people into sort of saying, "Well, we don't, we don't need to make abortion illegal. Well, if Barack Obama's elected president, what he'll do is he'll change the conditions in society such that people won't choose abortion anymore." And they've sort of talked themselves into thinking this, and it's, again, this species of thinking that law doesn't impact culture, this species of thinking that it's only culture that impacts law, and that we have to, although it's almost self-defeating, because, well, anyway. So basically, people just don't want to accept for reasons that I think are sort of lying to themselves. I mean, because in any other context, people understand that... I mean, because in any other context, people understand that the coercive power of law can have a profound educational impact, it can have a profound impact on changing behaviors. So, anyway, I think people are just unwilling to accept that.
John, this is something that was amazing to me, I saw, I do not smoke, I'm not a, I'm not a cigarette smoker. I have smoked a pipe before, I have smoked cigars before.
Okay.
But I'm not a cigarette smoker. I was blown away the other day when I saw like a post, someone online posted a picture. Do you know what it looks like, John, when you have, when you open up a pack of cigarettes?
Oh, it's just covered with warnings and labels everywhere, yeah.
Yes, the warnings that are like, literally like, what other product, when you open it up, like you flip the top and before-
This will kill you!
Literally, it's like in huge bold letters, it says, get help quitting.
Yeah.
Visit this website, call this phone number. And I'm like, if you don't think that incentives matter, if you don't think that there is an educational effort, why would you pass those laws?
Right, exactly. All right, we will return with more on this, we might even do a quick Super Bowl preview on Right to Life Radio, just for fun, just for a couple of seconds before we get to a serious pro-life topic. Anyway, stay tuned on Right to Life Radio. Jonathan, tomorrow is the Super Bowl.
Yes.
Um, now, I have some over-under bets for you.
Okay, okay.
Over/under 0.5 American politicians who will not be wearing a mask inside a luxury box at this football game?
See-
I feel like Gavin Newsom and Garcetti just got scared off from doing it at the NFC Championship game, so they might not, so I'm putting it at 0.5.
I was going to say, the pushback against Newsom has been so strong, you, you think it's, it's 0.5?
Meaning, do you think there will be one or zero?
I think there's going to be at least one because they can't help themselves and they'll just think, well, no one can see me, and, and someone will capture it on camera.
Right, right.
But I think, I'll say this, I think that there would have been a heck of a lot more
Had it not been for the NFC Championship game.
Which, on that note, as a side note, did you, did you see the masks at the press conference with the GOP members yesterday in Sacramento?
No.
All the members got custom-printed masks for speaking on the floor that are literally Newsom posing with Magic Johnson.
Oh, with no mask on, yeah.
It's a photo on their face of him with no mask, it is so great.
That's hilarious, all right, okay. To close out the show with something actually pro-lifey and serious here, just, you know, I hope you all enjoy the Super Bowl. I don't want to give the impression from this show that Jonathan and I are saying, lock up every woman who's had an abortion and throw away the key.
Yes.
Um, one of the things that is neat about the law, I guess, is that it is a highly flexible way of dealing with problems across a broad spectrum, from total legalization and federal government subsidization on the one extreme, to criminal prohibition on the other. And there's a lot of stuff in between that you can do to limit bad behavior and promote good behavior. And, like, I look at the Texas abortion law, for example, while it doesn't impose criminal penalties on abortion, and I think it probably should, and the reason why it doesn't is, I think, was in part to avoid review by, you know, avoid having the courts shut it down, that Texas abortion law, all it does to prohibit abortion is impose a $10,000 fine on someone who does an abortion, just on someone who does the abortion, not on the mom. And that has resulted in a 60% drop in the number of abortions in Texas. Now, it's imperfect, it's not all the way there, but that's one of the things that, I don't know, there's certain kinds of pro-lifers who are a bit more extreme about things, and they say, abortion is homicide, we need to treat it just like homicide, just like normal homicide, we need to arrest women, we need to arrest women. And I guess on an individual case-by-case basis, I'm not always sure all the time about to what extent we need to impose the same criminal punishments on the mom that we would impose on the doctor. I think there's differences in levels of culpability in terms of influence, depending on the situation, there are all kinds of differences there, maybe you have a very young person who's seeking out an abortion.
Maybe they're being pressured into it.
Maybe they're being pressured into it, yeah, exactly. So I think there are differences there where a reasonable pro-lifer could say, well, we need to kind of contour this a little differently as far as, yes, should we have criminal prohibitions on it, sure, should we have restrictions on it, sure, should we have stuff to deter bad behavior and punish bad behavior, yes, but the kind of punishment you're going to impose on a woman who chooses abortion in a desperate situation, that's very different from a doctor. And if you, both as far as what are the penalties, and then what is the enforcement?
Yes.
So, I mean, if you basically set any doctor who performs abortion is prosecuted for murder, for murder one, that pretty much, that pretty much ends abortion right there, even if you don't do anything towards women. And if there's some level of restriction, prohibition, penalties imposed on women, not necessarily at the full level of, you know, murder one, you can probably deter things in a way that's flexible and contoured to the level of, you know, pressure, pressures or undue influence that these women experience in their lives, whether from economic factors or even from physical coercion, which, if there's physical coercion involved, obviously no prosecution would be justifiable at all. So, that's the, when I'm saying outlaw abortion, understand that I'm not just saying, you know, I think some liberals will say, he's just going to lock women up and throw away the key, a woman in a desperate, horrible situation. No, I am saying lock abortion doctors up and throw away the key.
Yep.
Saying bury those, you know, those guys under the jail. But understand, again, that the law is a highly flexible instrument for addressing societal problems in a lot of different ways depending on the circumstances. So, anyway, just, just as a thought, long-term, as we hopefully enter into a post-Roe world, these are things that state governments, I think, need to think about.
Keep praying, folks, June, June is coming up fast.
Indeed it is, indeed, and may we live to see the end of Roe v. Wade this year. All right, that's Francis Albert Sinatra, Blue Eyes plays us out. Thank you all so much for listening to Right to Life Radio, a production of Right to Life of Central California. Thanks to all of you who came to our rally outside City Hall this week, who called your city councilman. Thank you so much and God bless.